Good evening. I call this public hearing to order. I'd like to recognize and appreciate that we're holding this hearing within the traditional territories of the Tishiat and the Pupucheset First Nations. My name is Penny Cote. I'm the Director for the Sprout Lake Electoral Area. I'd like to introduce you to the ACRD planning staff, Mr. Alex Dyer, Planning Manager, Carrie Creighton, Planning Assistant, and Jason Kivis, Back of the Room, Bylaw Enforcement Officer. So this hearing is being held in the ACRD boardroom and electronically Zoom by Zoom. It is being recorded and is live streaming on the ACRD website. Would staff please like to provide direction and instruction on how to participate in this hearing?
Happy to. Thank you first of all for participating in the hearing tonight. We do have a couple of members online. We have nobody in the boardroom at this point, but if you are watching the live stream on the website and you'd like to join the meeting, the details on how to how to connect can be found in the Zoom meeting invite document. It's linked on the website. I just want to quickly start off by highlighting some of the tools we have in Zoom that'll help you participate. If you are online, we ask that you you keep your audio muted so other meeting participants cannot hear your audio unless you are going to speak on the on the matter to reduce background noise. There will be an opportunity to speak after staff introduce the application. The applicants have an opportunity to present. So when the Chair will call upon any members in the public to comment, we ask that you either put your hand up or call out that you'd like to speak. And then once you're recognized by the Chair, we ask that you state your name and address followed by your comments or your questions. If you are in the boardroom, you'll be using the microphone system at the table. And then if you're online, you'll be unmuteing yourself at that point. When using the Zoom, there's also a chat feature access from the controls on your screen. If you'd like to make a comment or ask a question at any time, we encourage you to do so. These comments will be brought forward when the the Chair asks for public comments, and there will also be a final opportunity prior to the end of the hearing to ask any final questions or have any final comments on the application. Thank you.
Thank you for that. So the subject of this hearing are bylaws P 1506, P 1507, and P 1508. These bylaws are applicable to Lot 2 Sterling Arm Crescent and are necessary to rezone the subject property to allow for construction of a seventeen hundred and fifteen square meter personal storage facility to be utilized by the property owners for the storage of personal vehicles and equipment. If you have any questions or comments about any other unrelated topics, I'd ask that you contact the Regional District Staff after this hearing has been terminated. Would staff now please read out the notice of public hearing?
Okay, a public hearing for proposed development in Electoral Area D Sprout Lake has been scheduled to consider application number RD 23016, bylaws P 1506, P 1507, and P 1508. Hearing details Tuesday, October 1st, 2024 at 7:00 PM. Electronic or sorry, where electronic call-in or in-person attendance at the Albany Clackwood Regional District Office located at 3008 Fifth Avenue, Port Albany, B.C. Property owner applicant, Colson Forest Products Limited. The subject property is located at Lot 2 Sterling Arm Crescent and is legally described as Lot 2, Section 88, Clackwood District Plan VIP 63604. Bylaws P 1506, P 1507, and P 1508 are necessary to rezone the subject property to construct a seventeen hundred and fourteen square meter or eighteen thousand four hundred and fifty square foot personal storage facility to be used by the property owners for the storage of personal vehicles and equipment. Bylaw P 1506 is a Sprout Lake Official Community Plan Amendment Bylaw to redesignate the subject property from residential use to comprehensive development area. Bylaw P 1507 is a zoning text amendment by law to amend the ACRD zoning bylaw to add Section 167 Sterling Arm Crescent Comprehensive Development SACD District. And bylaw P 1508 is a zoning atlas amendment by law to rezone the subject property from acreage residential RA1 District to Sterling Arm Crescent Comprehensive Development SACD District. Now, the the public hearing will be held by the Director for Electoral Area D. The alternate director or the chairperson of the Regional District, the Board Resolution Making this delegation, copies of bylaws P 1506, P 1507, and P 1508, and all relevant background documents are available for review at the ACRD office and are available as supplementary information on the ACRD website at www.acrd.vc.ca/events/1-10-2024. Planning staff are available to answer questions in person through email or by phone during regular office hours, 8:00 AM to 4:00 30:00 PM, Monday through Friday from September 13th, 2024 to October 1st, 2024, excluding statutory holidays. Now, anyone who feels their interest in property will be affected by the proposed bylaws will be afforded a reasonable opportunity to be heard. You can participate in the the public hearing in person, electronically or by phone. Full instructions to do so can be provided by contacting planning staff. In addition, participation instructions are included in the supplementary information available at www.acrd.vc.ca/events/1-10-2024. The public hearing will be conducted from the ACRD office located at 3008 Fifth Avenue, Port Albany, B.C. Written correspondence can be submitted to the ACRD by hard copy delivered to the ACRD office in person or by mail. Email sent to publichearings@acrbc.ca. Email submissions will only be considered received if receipt confirmation is provided by ACRD staff. Written submissions can be provided at the public hearing or in advance. Written submissions provided in advance of the public hearing must be received no earlier than 8:00 AM on September 13th, 2024, and no later than 4:00 PM on October 1st, 2024. Submissions provided ahead of the public hearing outside of these parameters will not be included. If you have any questions, planning staff are available to provide assistance during regular office hours, 8:00 AM to 4:00 30:00 PM, Monday through Friday, excluding statutory holidays. We can be reached at Albany Clackwood Regional District Planning Department, 3008 Fifth Avenue, Port Albany, B.C., V9Y2E3, phone number 2507202700, and email planning@acrbc.ca.
Thank you for that. A lot of reading. So the purpose of this public hearing is to receive input written and verbal from any person who believes that their interest in property is affected by the bylaws. Members of the public will be allotted five minutes to provide their comments the first time. We will hear everyone wishing to speak for a first time before allowing second comments. Each time that a member of the public provides their comments, it will be allotted a maximum of five minutes. A person can come to the speaker's podium or online as many times as required, providing the person is providing information not previously presented at the public hearing. The Board of Directors will receive full minutes of this hearing before voting on these bylaws. Staff are taking minutes that summarize the issues raised. So if you're out there and you want to speak, please speak clearly and ensure accuracy. Thank you. So would staff please introduce the proposal?
Okay, happy to do that. I will begin with the agency referral responses that we've received. Those that we have received noted that their interests are unaffected. We recommend that the bylaws be approved subject to the conditions outlined in the responses. We do have responses from the Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure, from Island Health, and from ACRD Building Inspector. The Ministry of Transportation referral provided comments on the upgrades needed to the driveway access at the building stage. The Island Health comments provided general wording on on the sewage disposal requirements, and the ACRD Building Inspector referral provided comments on the light industrial type building of the the personal storage garage. So these agency referral responses are available for public review on the linked on the ACRD website if you're online and hard copy is available here in the boardroom. Agency responses will form a part of public hearing report that will be considered by the Board. There were also three letters of correspondence received from the public ahead of the 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 hearing. The letters express concerns about surface water runoff onto neighboring properties, onto the road, and into the lake. Improvements needed to the road access, comments about the large structure, and ensuring that there is no commercial use on the property. Now, copies of those letters are available for public review, again linked on the ACRD website, if you have access to that, and hard copies available here in the boardroom. The letters will form a part of the public hearing report that will be considered by the Board. Now, just to reiterate the proposal itself, as you've heard, the the property owners have applied to rezone the 3.6 acre vacant property to a site-specific Sterling Arm Crescent Comprehensive Development Zone in order to build a personal storage facility with an approximate seventeen hundred square meter or eighteen thousand four hundred square foot footprint on the property. The applicants intend to utilize the building to store personal vehicles and personal equipment. The scale of the larger structure requires a light industrial type designation in the building code rather than the the residential accessory structure that would be permitted in that zone. So the the rezoning would facilitate the construction of the new building, the new building, which would then follow the ACRD building permit process if it gets to that stage. The site-specific SACD zone would allow would also allow for one single family dwelling, accessory buildings and uses in home occupations. There would be no commercial or industrial business uses at the site, no commercial rental of storage spaces, and no onsite sales of vehicles within this zone. The proposed structure would be situated on the south end of the lot on a gravel pad that's already been cleared, and that's largely screened from the road. But I will highlight that the SACD zone also includes a six meter building setback from the side yard and a 10 meter minimum building setback from the rear yard. The zoning would also require a five meter deep landscaped area or combination of landscaping, solid screening, and native vegetation along all lot lines. The bylaws were given first reading by the Board on July 24th, 2024, at which time the public hearing was delegated to be held by the Area Director. As you heard, this application includes three bylaws. Bylaw P 1506 is the Official Community Plan Amendment Bylaw to redesignate the property from residential use to comprehensive development area. Bylaw P 1507 is the zoning text amendment by law that would introduce the new site-specific SACD zone. And bylaw P 1508 is the zoning atlas amendment by law that would rezone the property from the current RA1 to the new SACD. If this rezoning application proceeds, I will highlight that the applicants will be required to provide confirmation from the Sprout Lake Fire Department, that the fire safety measures are in place to to provide adequate fire protection at the site. This was included as a condition of approval when the Board first considered the application on July 24th. And finally, I wanted to highlight or provide some comments, I guess, on the the surface water runoff and drainage from the building as well as the impact on the road. As they were some of the the primary concerns that were raised in the the letters that we received here tonight. The building permit process will consider drainage from the building. The B.C. Building Code has requirements for drainage from a building that would be considered during the the Building Inspector Plan Check stage of their the building permit review. And the ACRD building bylaw also requires a stormwater plan be in place to to service the building. And then at the development stage, the Building Inspector would be would be completing their their footings and drainage inspections to ensure that that work takes place. And then beyond the building permit process, I just wanted to highlight that the ACRD does not directly regulate drainage on on properties. Drainage would be a provincial matter if it had an impact on a roadway or a or the natural environment, and then a civil matter if it were between the neighbors. Then highlighting the referral comments received from the Ministry of Transportation in their review of the proposal, they they reference the access. This is included in the agency referral package that is linked on the website and available here in person. Minister highlights that the access for the site would be up would or should be upgraded to meet the needs of accommodating the larger commercial and industrial vehicles, which would be included, which may include the site line improvements if required. It would also require a 600 millimeter or a two-foot culvert be placed along the length of the access road, and the access apron should be paved for its entire width and at a length of five meters from the road into property to ensure that that the the no material is brought from the property onto the road by the the larger vehicle. So again, these these technical considerations will be considered at the building permit stage if this application proceeds. And I will stop talking there. Thanks.
Thank you. Do we have a representative from the applicant? Tanis, so Tanis Fane, would you like to add anything at this point?
Yeah, so Britt just sent, or sorry, Mr. Colson just sends his regrets. He's out of country right now, but he did send a couple of notes that he meant on. So similar to just sort of the drainage issues. So basically, what's existing there now is not part of this application. So if there are any issues relating to existing concerns, then that needs to be addressed in a not through this rezone application. And Britt's happy to look at those issues. We also have a civil engineer on various projects that we're doing in the district right now, and he will be looking at the stormwater management of this new building to ensure that there is no negative impacts to neighbors or surrounding properties. The driveway has been in place for many years prior to Colson's purchasing the property, and if upgrades are required or if it's required to be moved, they're happy to do so. He also said there's some concern that's been noted about the zoning requirements, and their intent is that they will fully adhere to the bylaw that's in place for the new zones. They're not planning to, you know, start selling vehicles or operating a, you know, a shop out of this building. And then the building is located on the opposite side of the hill from the road, so visual impact, even though it is a large building, will be minimal. The size of the building only covers 11% of the three-plus acre property. So, you know, typical lot coverage is around 40%. So again, stormwater, we're not seeing this as a concern on this project at all. And then just a personal comment, his parents live down the road across the street, and they've had to address water runoff personally, so they've had to upgrade their curb in front of their house to ensure that they weren't getting a significant amount of runoff runoff onto their lot. So it's not it's not just, you know, the the Colsons on the high end of the road that are having, you know, having an issue of water flowing into everybody else's property. It's just the neighborhood. So again, if there are concerns that aren't related to the rezone application that have existed prior, then they need to be addressed in a different forum. And then finally, they want to remain good neighbors, and if there's any inconveniences from the construction of the project, they will address them immediately. They'll be following all required bylaws for construction timelines and cleanup required. Obviously, they won't be leaving mud on the road, that sort of thing. So yeah, they just wanted to put that out and make sure that everybody understands that they're not going to be negligible in the construction of the building. They'll be considering the inconvenience that it will have on neighbors for the duration of the construction. And that's that's what I have from my notes.
Great, thank you. I have a question. The it's the complaints that came in, there was talk about dust from the construction with trucks, and would that be recommending that the driveway is paved before construction starts, or could that happen? Or I'm just trying to see what could be done for to answer the complaints. Thank you.
For sure. Yeah, the I mean, it's it's typical for there to be dust and noise during the the construction of a building like this. I know that the Ministry of Transportation would like to see the apron paved at a at a length where it connects onto the the roadway. I think that would be something that would make sense to to be done at the the building permit stage. So while they're they're constructing that 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 buffer between the paved roadway and the the developed driveway would be would be dealt with. And I also know that the Ministry of Transportation is does have have regulations and and requirements about not bringing material and mud and gravel onto the roadways, and they have dealt with a number of situations in the the past here in the the Regional District where the highways contractor will will go and make sure that things are cleaned up. So if there is if there is an issue in in construction, either on this property or or on on anything else in in the Regional District, I would encourage people to to phone Main Road or to phone our office, and we will we will connect you with with the highways contractor and we'll we'll make sure that that you know, those issues are dealt with, or we can act as a liaison between that. But typically, it's it's not something where where we would see see somebody pave or cap their their driveway until the end of construction at the the occupancy stage.
Thank you for that. Yeah, I I have dealt with Ministry of Transportation a couple of years ago where they did some remediation work for ditching and because there is always an issue with upland water runoff. So hopefully, they can fix this. Work with Ministry of Transportation on getting the water. There's a point road that's right there, so it could be diverted possibly so that it goes down the road rather than onto people's properties, depending on the slope of the land, I guess, and the ditching that's provided. So all right, at this time, if that's all that we can hear from the applicants, we will now hear from members of the public. So please wait until you've been recognized by me. State your name and address before beginning. All participants are asked to abide by the social accountability and respectful language guidelines included in the sign-in sheet. Which is there a sign-in sheet on Zoom? Not on Zoom, so we would expect that to adhere to anyone online as well. Anyone who incites harm towards other participants will be asked to leave at the discretion discretion of the Chair. You will be cut off on Zoom if you are inappropriate. So is there anyone that would like to present from the public? I see we have someone in the Zoom audience.
We have two members online participating right now. If if you'd like to say something, feel free to unmute yourself and call out, and we'll wait for the the Chair to address you. And then again, just to highlight, if anybody's out there watching the live stream on YouTube right now, and you'd like to participate in the meeting, you can join the the meeting through the Zoom link available on the ACRD website, on the Zoom meeting invite document on the October 1st calendar entry page on the website.
Thank you. So it's open for anyone from the public that would like to speak. So you can either raise your hand or unmute yourself, and remember to state your name and address and okay, oh, yes. Joe.
Yes, can you hear me?
I can.
Yeah, my name's Joe Monroufay, address 10016 Sterling Arm Crescent. First of all, I want to say that I'm I'm going to be very careful with my words because I'm a neighbor and I'm very respectful for the people that are doing the project, and I have no problems with them. And I'd like to say to Tanis that as a neighbor, having watched over 100 loads of gravel and all the heavy construction that's gone into this project so far, which hasn't even been mentioned, we do know that it will affect the neighbors, but such is the way it is when there's any kind of development. I'd like to express the concern I have as to where this leads to in the future, because first of all, I don't like to see a residential zoning turned into anything but residential, because if you look at where we are now, we have nothing but residences within five kilometers of this property. Sure, there's one fire hall and there's a park, but it's a residential neighborhood. And my concern is that even though the development that is planned by the the family or the business, whichever it is that's actually doing the development, I think they're going to do it. They're going to do it very well, and I think they're going to maintain a a good neighborhood status. But once this is happening, what happens down the road? Right now, the idea of of having a stable of private cars parked up there is, you know, it's quite romantic, and it's it's probably the way it'll be, but what happens if somebody decides to take on the property, or if they sell the property to somebody that is in the race car industry or the race car game, and all these vehicles aren't going to be private vehicles of exotic status, they're going to be race cars, and are they actually going to be personal vehicles? That question was raised at the APC whether or not these vehicles are actually personal vehicles, because we all know that the persons that are involved in this project are are a very large corporation, and and of course, the vehicles don't have to be a personal vehicle, they can be a corporate vehicle. So is that a is that a consideration as far as the actual technicalities of this development? It says in favor of personal vehicles, and if they are personal vehicles, of course, that's that's the way it should be. But if they aren't personal vehicles, if they're vehicles that are being bought and fixed up and traded and sold and that, and they're all kept in a motorsports industry of some sort, then it's not it's not storage of personal vehicles. It's participating in a in a very romantic industry, which it may not influence the neighborhood at all, but it isn't what it's said to be. The other thing that people have mentioned, the the environmental impact, I'm sure that the engineers are going to try and do their best to litigate and and make make a minimal amount of impact, but we have seen as a neighbor a huge change in runoff, and we're all expecting a huge climate change. So I I am concerned that the engineering and that that goes into this will be to the highest standard as possible. So I'm not very good at this monologue, so that's that's off the top of my head what I'm I'm thinking, and and I think I've expressed a couple of my concerns. So I'll end it there. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Joe. Is there any other comments? Or would the applicant like to respond to any of that?
Yeah, I can. I have a few comments anyhow. So regarding the construction that's happened before this application, I'm not aware of that. I'm only involved in this application when it started. But again, just to reiterate what I said previously, is that all construction will be within the bylaws of the the municipality. So like Alex had said, cleanup would be required if there's a mess on the street. Dust is a normal construction thing that happens. It's not great for the neighbors, but it's, you know, it is part of developing properties. And then again, to reiterate, we have a civil engineer on this project who will be addressing the stormwater management, and they will be looking at what's existing. So if there are issues from the site that are already existing, and then what this new building will be, how it will be modifying what's existing, and coming up with a management plan to address both of those issues, potential issues. So I think that concern will be addressed at the building permit stage. And then in regards to personal vehicle use versus corporate vehicle use versus company use, I mean, this is a this is a residential property. The ask is to increase the size so that they can store multiple vehicles there. Whether the vehicles are owned by a corporation or by, you know, Britt and his wife, I can't say to that regard. I mean, I drive a company vehicle that gets parked in my driveway every evening. So I mean, I think we're sort of getting too too much in the weeds there. The zoning will address any if there are any infractions with the new zone, then bylaw enforcement will address those. So if the property is sold later on, and somebody does something other than what's allowable in the zone, that becomes a bylaw enforcement issue. Um, and and we can't. Plan or control what happens if this property is ever to sell. But as Brit has said before, they don't have an intention of selling the property, um, but as we know, anything can happen in the future, so. That just becomes a by law enforcement issue.
Thank you. Um. Have a question about uh, the building permit stage. Uh, does? Does the regional district get to see? Um, what the plan is for? Uh, the water runoff and. Um, some to address some of these concerns?
Yes, absolutely. So that that is something that the building inspectors will be looking at at the building permit stage. There are requirements in the building code for um. Uh, ensuring that the the stormwater and and drainage runoff is dealt with appropriately. And we do have that requirement in the ACR building bylaw as well. We'll also highlight that uh, for this classification of uh, a building, there there is um. Um, there's more engineering or. Required and and there will be oversight from a coordinating. Registered professional, I believe it's called, but uh, I think I think tennis would uh, would take on that that role in this case where where you have. An architect or a uh, a a professional overseeing all of the other professional. Engineering requirements that would be uh, involved here, and I would imagine it would be everything from structural to geotechnical to um. Um, electrical and all that stuff at at building of this scale. So I don't want to speak. Too much on the uh, the building permit requirements, as I'm not the building inspector, but uh, I do know that um. Drainage and site runoff is is one of the things that that we consider and and it is one of the things inspected. At the uh, the building stage as well. So they'll actually see it on the ground once it's um, once it's installed and and before it's covered up. Um. Yeah, I'll do that. Thank you.
Thank you. So if there is an issue, is there any way that it could be flagged and? Um, the the building inspector would be able to do something about that?
Yeah, so if there is an issue in the uh, the plan check stage, so if they're they're looking at the the plans and they identify an issue there. Whether the um, you know, the the pipes are are too small or it's not not designed correctly, they can uh. They can address it there with the the engineer and and the the coordinating professional before the building permits issue. We'll get the um, the issues rectified at that stage. Now, if they, if we issue the building permit and it's not installed correctly, or it's not installed at the right stage or at the right time. Um, or to the the level that it needs to be, then the building inspector can identify that through the inspection reports. Raise that with the applicants and then they would need to fix it to move on to the next stage of their um, uh. Of their construction and and we would not be issuing occupancy. Or a final inspection on a building, uh, if it if it didn't meet meet any of those those stages leading up to it. So there are a few steps along the way to to fix it, both. Prior to issuing the building permit and through the the development stage if the building permits issued.
Thank you. Uh, just I had that question because. Um, I'm not sure if, uh, I seen it sounds like there's already an issue from the other properties. Um, that Coulson's own right there. Uh, I don't, I'm not sure if they've tried to address that or. Uh, if this will just um. Make those issues. Uh, more heightened uh, going forward, so uh, not knowing that uh, is kind of a gap. Uh, in how this will be dealt with. Um.
Can I, can I comment on that?
Yes, please.
Yeah, so this building essentially falls under part three of the building code. Um, just because of the size, which is why we're rezoning. Um, so part three requires a team of engineers uh, to come on and do all of the design work. So that's not a requirement of part nine buildings, which is a residential home. So we will be required to have a civil engineer, electrical engineer, mechanical engineer, structural engineer and an architect, and then I will be certifying. Um, or providing a letter of assurance along with the other engineers to ensure that. The design of the building and all associated, um, like civil works. Um, ties it tie-ins to municipal infrastructure, all of those things are um, meet the building code and. Uh, the building inspector, while he'll come and do inspections, it really falls on those engineers and um, we. It we not, we will be working for the client, but we also have to ensure that this. This meets life and safety and that's for all public, so. Civil design is going to ensure that there isn't water runoff, whereas if you were building under a part nine, you wouldn't have a civil engineer looking at water runoff on your site. So, um, I think this project is in good hands in that regard, and all of the engineers involved will be, you know, making sure that they're meeting. The requirements above and beyond the client's expectation.
Thank you for that. Okay, at this time, would anyone else like to speak? I see another name up on the screen. Marilyn, or I'll ask if Marilyn would like to speak for a first time? I don't see that her hand or hear her. So Joe, you have another comment?
Uh, yes, um, I I I guess I'm addressing this to Tanis as a question. Uh, as a resident. In in this very neighborhood, uh, and I don't know, I'm sure she's walked around the block a year or two, but um, there's been a five acre. Block right next to this uh, property, which has been subdivided and it is in the process of being built upon. They had engineers look at the water flow and they conceded that the ditching was probably adequate. Um, the water that is going to come from this property, uh, that is being developed by the Coulsons is going to go through the same ditches. And I can tell you now that only one of the houses that is to be built on this five acre property is built. And in the rain last year, we had water going over the road, so um. I I think it's it it will be due diligence, uh, and I know Tanis is probably an engineer and and is going to is going to cover all the bases, but I think it would be due diligence of. Of anybody that is uh, engineering this property to ask some questions of the neighbors and um, get a bit of the history of what is actually happening and um, what has happened. Because unless I see somebody out here in their rain gear on a wet day, I think they don't understand the uh, some of the implications of of this much of a uh. Excuse me, of a watershed that that is exists now. Um, I'm sorry to hear that there aren't uh, two of the immediate neighbors here to speak because. Um, in the neighborhood jargon, there has been a lot of cursing going on because of the rearrangements of some of the ditching. And the way the water is flowing, it's obviously going to go downhill. And the way it flows downhill, it goes in the open ditches and um. People have uh, taken it upon themselves to try and divert it so that it doesn't go down their driveways, so um, I I'm uh. Once again, the word is concerned that um, that they uh, they pay enough attention to this because uh. Um, once again, I'm I'm trying to be a good neighbor. I'm just trying to say um. I hope, I hope they do due diligence, uh, and and um, I'd be quite happy to stand on the road and point out exactly what I'm uh, what I'm speaking about. Um, and like I say, I'd welcome it on a wet day too, because that's the best time to see it. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Uh, Tanis, would you like to respond?
Yeah, I I'm not an engineer, Joe. I'm I'm just an architect, but the civil engineer that we have on board is uh. Highly experienced and very diligent, and all of these concerns will be brought to him when we get to the building permit stage to address the property as a whole and. Any impacts it has on neighboring properties. So he won't just be looking at the property in isolation. It will be. The effect of the surrounding neighborhood, and like I said previously, he will be looking at any issues that have. That are in place already, um, that haven't been designed or engineered. And looking at ways to address that, especially if it's created from the Coulson property um, at the onset, so. Um, we have your contact number and we have the concerns for sure, so it will be noted. It's. It's uh, not something that anybody's turning a blind eye to, that's for sure.
Yes, please, staff.
I will also add that uh, the Ministry of Transportation has done some some recent work in the air, or I believe they are about to do some work, um. In that area on dealing with the existing drainage and and Joe, that the the concerns that. That you raise about what people diverting where the water goes from the the. The ditches into the lake, you know, has been raised with the ministry for a number of years now, so that uh, you know, I would always encourage. You know, the applicant and the neighbors to to reach out to uh, Ministry of Transportation on the on these issues as well, because they they do have the ability to. Um, to make some changes there and and you know, they do own the. The road right away, so if if people are modifying the ditches or adding culverts or doing anything. Uh, within the road right away, then the the ministry wants to know about those things and and they'll they'll want to make sure that it's it's been done appropriately. Just want to highlight that. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, I'd also like to point out that any development applicants, I always encourage them. To uh, engage the public and uh, their their neighbors to to uh, work with them. Uh, in the past and uh. Uh, usually I've I've um. Encourage this to happen before the public hearing, so that that any questions or um. Uh, issues that are that people have can be addressed before the public hearing, but um. Uh. That's uh, all I have to say about that. Uh, hopefully, well, hopefully, um, going forward. There could be some public consultation as to what you're doing and how you're doing it, so that the the residents around the area are. Are more knowledgeable about. Um, what happens with the engineers and and the geotecs and the. People that are are engaged in this development and will be able to provide peace of mind and um. Some information as to what to look for and and how they're going to deal with with the issues. So um, at this time, I'd like to ask if there is any further public comments or questions? Okay, um, the. Uh, the applicant, Tanis, would you have any last comments?
Uh, no, I think that we're okay.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay. And there's nothing online and. I don't see anybody to keep their hand up again.
No, I will just reiterate that if you'd like to get something in the last minute, feel free to pop it in the chat or uh, or for Marilyn or Joe, if you'd like to unmute yourselves and. We'll have final chance to do so once once Penny starts the uh, uh, the final process here.
Okay, thank you. All right, so seeing no more further comments. I would say please be advised that members of the Board of Directors cannot receive any new information related to these bylaws. Between the end of this hearing and making a final decision on the bylaws. If any board member does so, the hearing could be invalidated and would have to be held again. So with that in mind, does anyone have any final comments? Call for the first time, is there any further representation on the bylaws? I call for a second time for any further represent representation on the bylaws. Hearing no comments, I hear for a third time, call for a third time for any representation on the these bylaws. Hearing no further comments, I declare this meeting terminated. No more comments. Thank you very much for participating and. If you have any further questions or anything, can direct them to staff.